We're getting one of the streets.
Yeah, good. Oh, man, I'm awesome.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to, um, I'm trying to get, uh, so we can have the open house meeting the second week of September. I'll let you know. So hopefully, we'll get it with commit. I want it, I want the open house to be like a festival, the open house. It's really.
Good, good morning and welcome to the August 25th, 2021 city council meeting. There he is. We're going to start off with the invocation with Councilman McGee, followed by the fudge of allegiance. If you'll please stand.
Hey, we bow. Our gracious Father, we first want to say thank you for this beautiful day that you've blessed us to see. We pray for our council, we pray for our citizens in the city of Tyler. We pray for our fire department and our police department that put their lives on the, on the line on a daily basis that we may have a safe environment to live in. We ask you to please give us your grace and give us your mercy and help us to make decisions that will be beneficial to our city and will be pleasing into your sight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the minutes from the July 14th, 2021 meeting.
Move to approve minutes as presented.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we're going to come down for a couple of awards.
So you guys are going to stand for about eight minutes. Eight minutes. Should we do? Okay. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I'm Belen Casillas. I'm the Keep Tyler Beautiful Community Coordinator. Today, we're presenting two awards to the city council, the Gold Star Award and the Sustained Excellence Award from Keep Texas Beautiful. The Keep Tyler Beautiful Board was founded in 1995 and has 10 board members who help run our programs and community events. Our mission is to encourage beautification, waste reduction, recycling activities, and in our beautiful city of Tyler. In 2020, the Keep Tyler Beautiful was recognized by the Keep Texas Beautiful as a gold affiliate. This is our 15th consecutive year. We are also an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful and the B-City USA. I have a short presentation showcasing the work we completed in 2020, which led to us receiving these awards. Despite a global pandemic, our beautification projects had a successful year in 2020. The Beauty in the Box program showcasing local art had 72 boxes by the end of the year. The beautification effort is fully funded by sponsors, which are listed at the bottom of each box. There are currently 84 traffic cabinets wrapped today. Our Tyler Gins graffiti program strives to cover up graffiti within 72 hours of being reported. The Tyler Gins graffiti program in 2020 covered 69 locations, which varied in size and length. Our Beauty in the Business Award recognizes businesses who go above and beyond in maintaining their property and landscaping. These businesses are nominated by the public and voted on by the Keep Tyler Beautiful Board. The 2020 winners were First Place Building, Andy's Frozen Custard on Broadway, Crafts and Quilting, et cetera, and James Cakes on Front Street. Keep Tyler Beautiful hosts the Adopt a Spot Program, where our community groups and businesses can adopt streets, parks, and campuses in Tyler. The groups commit to cleaning their adopted area four times a year. Currently, 51 miles of our roadways and 243 acres of 16 parks are adopted. Most of the Keep Tyler Beautiful budget goes toward a litter control contract with the Andrews Diversified Industries. Through this contract, 116 miles of our roadways are cleaned in a two-month cycle. We also respond to community complaints about litter through this contract. And the slide that you'll see here talks about our Great Tyler Cleanup. So a large part of our mission is to keep Tyler litter-free and encourage our citizens to participate in citywide cleanups. Each spring, we host the Great Tyler Cleanup. However, due to COVID-19 restrictions, we merged the annual event with Park Service Day and hosted the citywide cleanup and beautification projects in the fall. By implementing social distancing, requiring masks, and providing online registration, we were able to host the event for 153 volunteers that fall. Volunteers removed 10,000 pounds that day of litter from our streets, parks, trails, and creeks. Our young citizens also joined in the litter cleanups and the beautification efforts. Last year, we hosted seven small beautification projects with a total of 167 volunteers. Creating new partnerships with local organizations helped our volunteering numbers in 2020. The projects and the cleanups previously mentioned totaled to $29,158.40 in volunteering time. I want to mention that we removed 19 tons of litter from our parks and streets in Tyler in 2020. In conjunction with America Recycles Day, every November, Keep Tyler Beautiful hosts the Tyler Recycles Day event to educate the public regarding recycling and help promote the Tyler Recycle Collection Center. In 2020, we combined Tyler Recycles Day and the Biannual Paint Recycles Day. We helped 133 households recycle 8,178 pounds of paint. The Paint Recycled Event was funded through a grant by the East Texas Council of Governments. At the recycle center, we collected 3,970 pounds of shredded paper and four pounds of other recyclable items. Keep Tyler Beautiful partners with the Tyler Trees Committee to host Arbor Day each year. In 2020, we hosted six Arbor Day celebrations, a tree planting at Faulkner Park, UT Tyler, Tyler Junior College, Moore Middle School, our annual seedling giveaway, and a seedling planting at Lindsay Park. Approximately 856 volunteers have helped plant 165 trees and 2,400 seedlings at these events. The Project Daffodil is a daffodil bulb cell hosted by Keep Tyler Beautiful. As a beautification initiative, the project was started in 1995. However, it was revived in 2018 and serves as a fundraiser. In 2020, 10,400 bulbs were sold and planted to beautify our community. Much of our work could not be achieved without the help of our community partners. In 2020, we built the Honeybee Observation Hive at the Tyler Municipal Rose Garden, thanks to the partnerships with East Texas Beekeeper Association and the Boy Scouts of America East Texas Council. Our mission as an affiliate of the B-City USA is to educate and raise awareness in the community to, to impact and present the importance of all pollinator species, including honeybees. Also, Keep Tyler Beautiful's Youth Advisory Committee consists of 10 members, which help push our beautification projects even further. In 2020, we expanded our beautification efforts by offering local artists painting opportunities. In the fall of 2020, Keep Tyler Beautiful took on 635, took on a 635-foot-long art mural. The Keep Tyler Beautiful Art Mural features plants, wildlife native to East Texas, and it is located along South U233 between Fry Avenue and New Copeland Road. Other murals funded by Keep Tyler Beautiful are located at MFJ Scott Park Restrooms and near our new splash pad at the Wilder Park. Lastly, I would like to thank our dedicated board members and volunteers. We would not be able to host a successful Keep Tyler Beautiful program without them. We also recognize our city leaders and committed board members. You guys are the backbones to a successful program. We're extremely honored to be able to keep Tyler Beautiful, and it is recommended that the city council accept the Gold Star Affiliated Award and the Sustained Excellence Award from Keep Texas Beautiful. Thank you.
This really is a big day in the Keep Tyler Beautiful board. You're just keeping Tyler Beautiful. And there are so many boards and commissions in the city that you can volunteer to be on. This board seems to be one of the most popular boards to be on. It's exciting when you guys are busy. Y'all are ready. Just thank you for all the volunteers, for the board members, and for what you do. So, pick your side.
Just write this as well. Now we have some folks that have been with the city of Tyler a long time. I believe just one of them is here today, but I'm going to recognize all three. Uh, the first one is Benny Yasdan Panahi. And I, I've. And I woke up in the middle of the night trying to remember how to pronounce Benny's last name. Did I, did I do a good job?
Yes, you did. We'll talk later.
We also have, um, I didn't mention with Benny, he's the Chief of Information Officer, 20 years of service. So, sorry, I forgot to say that, Benny. Uh, Zachary Powers, Fire Captain, 20 years of service. And also Jose Avalon Nada, Groundskeeper, 20 years of service. And it's pretty remarkable when you see these folks that have been with the city of Tyler for 20 years. And hopefully, they'll be with us for 20 more years. Has Benny already left?
He's just resting out, yeah, he's here for another few years.
But really, it's, it's not, not necessarily the elder folks, but the folks who have been with the city of Tyler this long that really meant toward the young folks who are coming in to make the organization better. So, thank you for many years of service, Benny. You're welcome. Okay. Please go back up. All right, zoning, Z1, Kyle?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This, uh, the first two items that I'm going to present together, they are related for the same area. And so the, the first item is a zone change request from R1A Single Family to PUR Plan Unit Residential District. The, uh, the applicant's requesting the zone change to allow for the development of a private gated street. The, to allow to, to have a gated street requires the PUR zone designation. The, uh, all the adjacent properties are zoned for single-family and are developed with single-family homes. The request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide, identifying the property as single-family, medium-low density. The applicant plans to develop 17 single-family homes with a density of 1.9 units per acre, which is, uh, which is low density. Uh, the, as you can see here, the lots are either meeting or exceeding the current zoning requirements of 9,000 square feet. And so it is consistent with the current zoning of the property. The access to the property will be from Fisher Drive, which connects to Robertson, uh, Robertson Road. The, uh, the applicant is also requesting a closure of the, the end of Fisher Drive to allow for the, uh, the gate to be placed on that portion of the road. Uh, just go to that next case here. Uh, well, actually, on this, this request, the, uh, we did receive letters in opposition from, from some neighbors. Uh, mostly those were, excuse me, related to drainage concerns on the, on the property. And the applicant is currently working through some study, some studies on the property for, for drainage and engineering. And so we do have the two requests here today, but the applicant is requesting that the, these two items be tabled until September 22nd to allow for more time to work through the, uh, the drainage and the engineering studies on the property. So, the, uh, the plan that is zoning commissioned by a 5-0 vote recommended approval of both the, the PUR zoning and the, uh, street closure. But at this time, the applicant requests to table the applications for, uh, until September 22nd.
Kyle, are you ultimately asking to table Z1 and Z2?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Kyle?
I move to table Z1 and Z2.
Second.
Uh, got a motion by Haney, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can we go ahead and vote on Z2?
Did you vote on Z2?
My motion was for Z1 and Z2.
You did both of them? Okay, good.
Uh, the, uh, the next two items are also related, so I will, uh, present those together. But we'll need separate votes for those. The, uh, the first one, Z3, is a site plan amendment for, uh, the PCD zoning on the property is planned for a planned commercial district. The applicant's requesting the site plan to allow for the development of, uh, two quick-serve restaurants on the property. The property is located at the northwest corner of Earl Campbell Parkway and the West Loop. The applicant, uh, again, the, uh, proposed site plan does show, uh, two restaurants on the property that will be accessed from the loop and also from a shared driveway down to Earl Campbell Parkway. The, uh, this request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide, which identifies it as mixed-use center. It is also consistent with the development standards for, uh, for the Bellwood Park development that were approved in 2008. Of the notices that were sent, there were return of favor or in opposition to the, the request for the site plan of this property. The, uh, the plan that is zoning commissioned by a 5-0 vote recommended approval of the PCD site plan. Along with that was a, uh, a request to close an unapproved right-of-way that is on that property as a horseshoe that was planted a long time ago. And so the request is to abandon that right-of-way and incorporate it into the, uh, the rest of the property for future development. And also, the plan that is zoning commissioned by a 5-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
One quick question. Kyle, all we're doing is just the corner, the commercial corner of this property. We're not talking about Earl Campbell Road going anywhere other than where it shows it right now.
That's right. So this, uh, site currently had, or is currently located along Earl Campbell Parkway as it's currently built. And so this, uh, this does not impact that.
I do have one card from Dr. Anderson. Would you like to come up? If you can just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Dr. Lawrence Anderson, 1318 South Chilton Avenue, Tyler, Texas. Um, I'm here today representing the Lado Lago Group, which owns a 278 retract in Bellwood. We are in support of the planned commercial district plan, the final site plan, closing West Chase Boulevard and the parcels north of Sam's on the northwest corner of Earl Campbell and Loop 323. We have concerns regarding the remainder of the development, specifically the preliminary plat map that came out of the last planning and zoning meeting. We look forward to the much-needed development on the west side, particularly the rejuvenated park along Bellwood Lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I've got two other cards here. Stuart Fink, Stuart, do you care to speak or?
Nothing.
Okay. And also Rick Martindale, just here for questions?
Right.
Okay. All right. Um, I'll entertain a motion for Z3 and Z4.
I move to approve Z3 and Z4.
Second.
You got a motion by McGee, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Z5.
Okay, we're also going to present Z5 and Z6 together as they are related. The, uh, the first one is a zone change from, uh, R1A Single Family to PUR Plan Unit Residential District. The applicant plans to develop, detach, single-family homes on this property. The, uh, uh, the adjacent properties to the northwest, or all, all the adjacent properties are zoned and developed as single-family homes. This, uh, request is consistent with Future Land Use Guide, uh, which identifies the property as, uh, single-family, medium-low density. The, uh, the applicant is proposing to develop 55 single-family homes with a maximum density of 3.49 units per acre. Uh, they are proposing to develop private streets in this development. There are actually two, uh, there's two parts of it. On the west side, there is the, uh, about 40 homes. And then on the east side, which connects down to, uh, down to Juniper Lane on the south side, that, that is, uh, about 19, 20 homes. The, uh, the, so like I mentioned, the, uh, they, they do plan to develop in the 55 detached, single-family homes. The site plan proposes a privacy fence along the north side of the property, adjacent to the existing homes on the north side. And the, uh, site does show, uh, common open spaces on the south side and then also through the middle of the property. Of the notices that were received, we received, uh, five in opposition, with the total protest calculation of 13.86%. Uh, this opposition is mainly concerned with drainage and, and other, uh, development of the property, not so much the actual, uh, density or, or form of development. So, uh, with a, by a five or a 4-0 vote, the plan that is zoning commissioned recommended approval of the zone change. And then the, uh, the follow-up is some unapproved right-of-way or unapproved streets, uh, within, within that area that the applicant's requesting to close in order to be able to incorporate into their development. Uh, as you can see here, it's Delmar, uh, or Delmar Street and Juniper Lane. These are currently undeveloped or unbuilt. And, uh, of the notices, we did receive one in opposition. Again, I think mainly due to concerns about the, the drainage in that area. Uh, and by a 4-0 vote, the plan that is zoning commissioned recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? I've got one card here from Mark Preisner for questions, but Mark, can you come on up? You know the drill.
Thank you, Mark Preisner, 3815 on Bullard Road.
The, the folks that are, that protested are in red. Are y'all continuing to work with them?
Yes. Can you turn it down? You're right. Okay. Uh, yes, and, and the big thing, one of the reasons that we're changing this to a PUR from how it's currently zoned, the number of units only changes one or two lots in the overall. Um, so the density is actually quite low for, for being a zone of PUR, proposing PUR. But the biggest issue was that the way it's platted right now, the streets that are shown actually come all the way across and through the creek and connect across. One of the things that we were trying to do in this development is to protect that creek, leave a buffer in place, uh, and, and improve the drainage that, that there are current issues with right now. A lot of the issues with the, the properties to the north are currently, there's a drainage pipe that comes in that stops somewhere right in here, and it just is an open inch from there on. Part of this development will be taking that pipe and enclosing it and taking it all the way to the creek. Um, also including, all of the drainage will be coming down to these streets, so it will pull off and improve, uh, drainage in that, that whole area to the north. So while these lots are a little bit smaller than what the existing zoning is, the overall density is, is the same. So when we do the traffic calculations, we're talking about a net increase of three, three vehicle trips per hour, uh, as far as an increase over what it is zoned or as it's zoned and could be developed today. So, given that it's, it's a similar density, it's, you know, you're really talking about the, the same numbers in the overall development, this is a better plan to protect the creek, keep that drainage in place, make it better, and, and really keep the aesthetics of what both sides have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mark?
No, I just want to make a comment before I make a motion, that I'm excited to see this development take place. It's, it's occurring in an older neighborhood, and anything like this creates excitement and vitality for re-energizing that, that portion of the town. And with that, uh, I move to approve Z5 and Z6 together.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Z7.
Patricia. All right, the next request is a zone change from C1 Light Commercial District to, uh, PUR Plan Unit, Plan Unit Residential District. Uh, this is along Quinn Farms Road. The, uh, the applicant's requesting the zone change in order, in order to develop single-family homes on the property. Uh, the adjacent properties to the north are zoned PCD and is the location of a landscaping company. Uh, to the east and south are currently located outside the city limits. And then to the west is PUR and is developed with, uh, single-family homes. This request would amend the Future Land Use Guide from neighborhood commercial to single-family, medium-low density, which is, uh, consistent for that area. Uh, the applicant plans to, uh, develop 10, uh, single-family homes on the property with a maximum density of eight units per acre. Uh, they have prepared a narrative for the, uh, for the development, uh, which establishes setbacks. The maximum height generally is consistent with, uh, with the, the PUR of the area. The, uh, of the notices that we received, we didn't, we received a one in favor and zero in opposition to the request. And the plan that is zoning commissioned by a 5-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
I do. Kyle, with this higher density than what already exists in that Quinn Farms area, how does that impact traffic? Because that's right at the entrance to the addition.
Well, the, the current zoning is for commercial, which would actually have a higher, uh, you know, traffic impact than, than this.
That's what I thought.
Also being at the entrance, it would actually probably be more appropriate to have higher density.
Sure. Absolutely. Well, I like the fact that more homes are being constructed in Tyler, Texas, so that's awesome. With that, I move to approve Z7.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z8.
This is an annexation request for approximately 1.54 acres located at the northwest corner of highway, highway 155 south of Frankston Highway and County Road 1114. This is just south of the Spirit of Texas Bank. The applicant's requesting to annex the remainder of the property. You can see here, the blue line represents the city limits. And the area on that property that's white, they are requesting to annex into the city. They do plan to develop a auto body shop on the property. The, as you can see here, the property is, straddles the city line. And so they are annexing. The rest of that property is a voluntary request by the applicant. The, the adopted or the proposed zoning is PCD planned commercial district. And it would have a site plan attached to the, to the property, which is actually shown in the next, next request. And so I'll, the, for this annexation, the, the recommendation from the planning and zoning commission is to approve the annexation, which establishes the new city limits, the new boundary of City Council District Number Two, the new boundary of the Tyler extraterritorial jurisdiction. The, it allows the city manager to be authorized to sign a written agreement for provision of city services per the Texas local government code. And it establishes the future land use of the property as a general commercial, which is, or actually it establishes as mixed-use center, which is consistent with the surrounding area. And then also establishes original zoning of PCD planned commercial district. And by a five zero vote, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
District two has died grown by 1.54 acres.
It's hard to believe that it's not in the city limits.
I know, right?
But now I know why they sell fireworks there.
So the, it was actually back in the day where they did the annexation along, annexation along the loop of about 500, 400 feet off the loop. Now we've actually got development here that needs the rest of it.
Move to approve Z eight.
Second.
Uh, motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z nine.
So this, this is actually the, kind of the follow-up to that, now that that other area is annexed into the city. The applicant's requesting to re-zone the remainder of the property to PCD planned commercial district and to establish the site plan for the entire site. And so they, they plan to develop a vehicle paint and body shop on the property. The, all the adjacent properties to the north and the east are zoned C2 for general commercial district. Generally, the area, this area is, you know, suitable for body shops, car, you know, car lots, things like that. This is consistent with the future land use guide. And here's the site plan, again, that proposes a 16,100 square foot building to be used as a paint and body shop. Of the eight notices sent, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. And the, the planning and zoning commission by five zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z nine.
Second.
Uh, motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's it for the zoning items. We're about to move into the budget presentation. So if anybody's here for zoning that would like to leave, feel free to. Oops.
Mayor and I talked about y'all taking a break between zoning and the Jerron Sitch on Fire. I've taken items two at a time. And there's no break needed, so. Yeah, I looked at the city attorney, she was going to stop me. She was like, you know, give her a run with it.
She got a smile. She has a smile on her face. It's all good.
And it's not the smile, we messed up, so.
Mayor Warren and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to be before you this morning for one of our most important roles in governing and administering this municipal organization. The presentation and discussion of the plans and services for the coming fiscal year in the form of our proposed $212 million budget for operations and capital improvements. We are proud of the financial document before you as it details our year ahead and we had discussed the accomplishments of the year behind us. During the past year, we improved our community assets such as streets, drainage, parks and facilities, implemented new technology, moved up maintenance for buildings and replacement of vehicles, and ensured that our public servants had the resources they needed to improve our citizens' quality of life. We are building on that progress in the coming year with a focus on increasing the safety and well-being of our citizens and businesses. This budget we are presenting today is our map for the road ahead. It states our intentions for the next 12 months, built on forecasts of what we can expect using the insights of our past experiences. We built the recommendations in this budget from the guiding themes of Tyler First at the larger level of the city's growth and the strategic plan for the next five years. With these two documents as our focus, we then develop a plan of services and operations that move in the direction that these plans point towards. We don't always know what the immediate future will present or new obstacles will pop up in our path. Yet we use our annual budget documents to steer us through these, those challenges to move forward the city of Tyler's vision to be nationally known for our sense of community, commitment to a robust business environment, quality medical care, excellent educational institutions, and beauty of public spaces and neighborhoods. I mentioned new obstacles as we are still evaluating our economic recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. While the health impacts are still being felt throughout our city and in our hospitals, we have seen growth in our retail and commercial activity that has continued to increase sharply after a decrease in April 2020. The Tyler economy has consistently matched or outpaced the state of Texas' monthly increase percentages on sales and use tax receipts. And we expect to end this fiscal year with 11% growth above last year's, this last fiscal year's actual realized revenue. Our sales tax revenue traditionally makes up about 40 to 43% of our general fund revenue. And we monitor as progress or retractions as significant changes correspond to immediate actions in our decisions for upcoming expenses. We are forecasting no growth in our sales and use tax projections for fiscal year 2022 as we are cautious of the volatility of the economy in the year ahead. Our economies are incredible growth since May 2020, yet we are uncertain how long this growth could continue in the coming year. In reviewing different economic forecasts, there is an expectation that commercial activity may level off in the coming year at the new highs that we're seeing. And as our budget model is being built off of a flattening of the sales and use tax revenue at this new high point. Another indicator on the health of our economy in the COVID-19 pandemic is the state of our hotel occupancy tax revenue. When travel and tourism-related activities stopped in the summer of 2020, our concerns were on how many hotels we shuttered and not to return to operations when the pandemic ends. The revenue that is generated by our hotels pays for the conference center, Rose Garden, our arts and culture programs, and visit Tyler operations. Without a healthy hotel occupancy tax revenue stream, we would not be able to promote and host the conventions, arts, and destination-based tourism that benefits our economy. There was a silver lining that developed during the pandemic due to our being the medical center of East Texas. The traveling nurses sent to our hospitals to provide support to those in need filled our hotels and kept their doors open. This allowed for our hotel occupancy tax to be stabilized in January 2021 and build to its pre-pandemic numbers. As the traveling nurses departed Tyler, we saw a recovery on sports events, tourism activity, and area functions that bring in guests outside of the Tyler area. And referencing back to new obstacles that we don't anticipate in the budget preparation, winter storm Yuri literally came down on the city with no advance notice. We are extremely proud of the response from our city staff as they braved freezing conditions never experienced before for the prolonged severity here in East Texas and protected the lives of our residents. They kept streets open for emergency vehicles, worked to keep water flowing as pipes were bursting, collected medical waste from our hospitals when no one else could get to them, rescued stranded motorists and those in need, and took on each challenge with the intent of solving it as they knew that they were saving the lives of their neighbors and fellow citizens of Tyler. We as an organization must be flexible at all times as we deal with crises regularly. We know that plans must be abandoned or changed on the fly if needed. Yet we stress the importance of planning and analysis at all levels, from the departments to the full city, in order to improve our service to our citizens. Our commitment to performance excellence at all times doesn't depend on the conditions of the weather or culture-shifting illnesses, but on the dedication of the nearly 870 public servants who are called to serve always for our citizens. We continue to grow our police department to address and handle community needs. This includes two police officers in this current fiscal year that were approved through the U.S. Department of Justice's COPS grant. The COPS grant will pay approximately 50% of the two new officer salaries and equipment for the next three years, at which time the city will assume all costs related to the positions. We are requesting the addition of two more officers for the coming fiscal year as we focus on improving investigation response times and how we work with our homeless population. This will provide an authorized staff to the police department of 201 officers if approved. We have approximately 300 homeless people that make their home here in Tyler's downtown and other parts of the city. Our close work with our local nonprofits and assistant groups has consumed more of our time for the community response officer who works on this beat. And we are requesting the creation of a homeless outreach officer to focus on this issue full-time. The expectation of this position is that it will reduce the caused disturbances that other officers get called to respond to, work to reduce our visible population of homeless as he works with them to help get into shelters or reunite with family or friends, reduce the amount of homeless that are going to our hospitals and route them when needed to the correct treatment for mental illness, and also ultimately reduce the total population of our homeless here in Tyler. Also, more and more of our crimes that our officers and investigators are solving come down to what they can track and prove off of the electronic devices that everyone carries and uses as part of their lives. The cell phones, iPads, laptops, door video cameras, and other electronic equipment that are commonplace now also holds the key to solving crimes ranging from theft to murder. Our staff has built a high-tech crime lab to review and analyze this dead, dead devices and data, but it still takes the eyes and keen sense of an investigator to make the connections. This position will provide for the additional investigator as the demand for this analysis continues to grow and to work to reduce the time from collection to linking the data directly to the crime. Our family serving your family, this is the motto and continued belief from our fire department to the community they serve. In the case of the Tyler Fire Department family, they are now ranked number one by the ISO for the public protection class. They share this rating with our full city as we are now at one out of 393 fire districts in the nation to achieve this rate, which equates to lower insurance premiums for our citizens and the businesses and business properties. The ISO study did show that we need to add an additional ladder truck to our fleet with the growth of the multi-story buildings that we have here in Tyler. We are requesting the purchase of a tower truck to address this. Currently, the city has two frontline ladder trucks and one reserve ladder, which is currently unmanned to address these needs. In addition to being able to perform the same duties of a ladder truck, the tower truck includes a bucket or platform that allows for a stable place for victims to stand while being rescued. This additional capability allows for better responses during balcony, mid-rise, and high-rise rescues. While this truck must still go through a design and the apparatus committee, it is estimated that the tower will extend between 75 to 100 feet and be placed in service in November 2022. Along with the tower truck request, we are requesting the addition of two firefighters for the coming year. The additional staffing is needed to, as we work to fully man this engine along with the continued addition of staff to address the next station that will be built in the future. Our planning is that we slowly continue to add firefighting, fire staffing in the next decade to come to operate the next fire station when it is built in the next 10 to 15 years. Cancer is one of the primary killers of firefighters throughout the United States as they are exposed to numerous chemicals and carcinogens while fighting fires and hazardous material accidents. We have instituted numerous processes and equipment to aid in keeping our firefighters safe. And we continued with this push in the two new fire stations that we opened in 2020. Both have the ability to keep and to clean the bunker gear separate from the living areas, with even the exhaust from where the gear is stored being brought away from where the firefighters work. As a continuation of this effort in the coming year, we, to protect those who protect us, we are adding to the replacement of the bunker and protective gear as we work to have each firefighter with two sets of gear available to reduce their contact with cancer-creating agents that they are exposed to. Our dedication to our citizens' quality of life continues through the upgrades and improvements through our parks and trail systems. As our citizens and visitors have taken to upgrades and additions at Fun Forest Park, Wilder Park, Lindsay Park, and Faulkner Park, we continue the plan for further growth and reinvestment. The Legacy Trail Phase Two will link the new Stewart Park on Frankston Highway to the Rose Garden Center and fund it primarily through a Texas Department of Transportation grant to improve walkability. Staff is preparing for major improvements at Nobly Young Park through the use of community development block grant funding, which is similar to how we improved Emmett J. Scott Park last year. We are moving forward with ensuring that each of our 30 parks are upgraded as we now evaluate Pollard Park and Winter's Parks for improvements. Our commitment to our largest infrastructure investment, our streets, continues with two cents of the property tax rate set aside towards our Quality Street Commitment Fund. It is expected that we will generate $1.95 million towards asphalt seal coating and crack sealing in the coming year. This will provide for approximately 55 lane miles of streets repaired and maintained in our city. This, along with the $3.5 million from the half-cent fund for street overlays, keeps the city on its goal of 81 to reach for our street program's pavement condition index. We have developed a more extensive brick street repair program that we began this current fiscal year and build upon for the coming year. We are including $350,000 for brick street enhancements, along with unfreezing a brick street operator positioned to hire. We understand the importance of our brick streets and how they tie to our character and sense of history and excited about the move to address their maintenance in a greater capacity. The half-cent fund is our source to move forward the intelligent traffic system that is linked together, that is linking together our traffic signals and other traffic devices to improve flow for our drivers. Our projects are to connect the school beacons, our projects to connect the school beacons and signal retiming on South Broadway, Trup Highway, and East Southeast Loop 323 are proving successful. And we are planning to spend $1.2 million for the next year on further improvements. The goal of our ITS program is to budget at least $1 million a year for the next 10 years as we build a traffic system that will work together and reduce congestion in our city. Included in the ITS program for fiscal year 2022 is funding for an advanced traffic management system. This system will allow staff to monitor performance measures of the traffic signal system as well as make changes to traffic signals remotely when required. This communication will be accomplished through cellular communication devices that will be installed on approximately 140 signal intersections throughout the city. Other items planned in part for the fiscal year 2022 ITS program include the upgrades to approximately 80 traffic signal controllers and upgrades to the vehicle detection systems within 15 intersections along South Broadway and East Southeast Loop 323. These upgrades will replace existing systems that have exceeded their lifespan and ensure that all traffic systems communicate with the advanced traffic management systems mentioned earlier. The city's half-cent fund has provided for the funding of capital projects in Tyler since 1995 and is a current source of funding for 27 active projects throughout the city. We anticipate working on 16 capital projects during the coming year, which in total will be approximately $21.8 million in parks, streets, drainage, traffic, and airport improvements. The half-cent's 10-year plan projects for $154 million of capital improvement, all of which are cash-funded and require no general obligation debt. For fiscal year 2022, sales tax revenue continues to be the main funding stream for our general fund activities. The general fund are the services that do not have the ability to generate their own revenue as our enterprise funds do, including such functions as the police, fire, parks, library, municipal courts, streets, and traffic control. Our projections for property tax based on the radar discussed in a minute are approximately 32% of the general fund budget. An interesting note on our property levies is that the amount we bring in, approximately $255.2 million, barely covers the budget for the fire department at $20.4 million. This is why we continue to work on different revenue streams for our general fund services to protect the franchise fees, grants, and other revenue opportunities beyond property tax. We are recommending a property tax rate increase for the coming year to provide for the enhancement of public safety that we have built into this proposed budget. Your current average property tax rate is 25.90 cents per $100 valuation. And we're proposing through this budget to adopt a rate of 26. And we're proposing through this budget to adopt a rate of twenty-six point nine nine cents per hundred dollar valuation. During the legislative session of two thousand nineteen, the amount municipality could raise a property tax rate without automatically having to hold an election was lowered from eight percent to three point five percent. You may notice that the proposed tax rate is approximately five point five percent higher than the no new revenue rate of twenty-five point five seven five two cents per hundred dollar valuation. Part of the legislation passed in two thousand nineteen allowed municipalities to capture any amount between the proposed rate and the voter approval rate that was not used during the fiscal year for the three preceding years. During the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, the city adopted a tax rate of twenty-five point nine zero cents, which was a point zero nine cent decrease from fiscal year two thousand twenty and lower than the calculated no new revenue rate of twenty-six point one zero nine one cents for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. The difference between the adopted rate and the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one voter approval rate of twenty-seven point zero nine five cents is one point one nine five cents. That difference is considered the increment rate, and the city has the option to recapture the one point one nine five cent difference anytime before fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. This property tax rate is the lowest of cities over fifteen thousand in population in Texas and reflects the values of the blueprint as set out in nineteen ninety-five. Our property tax rate is significant as it does not have any debt components associated with it. For every tax rate that is set in the state of Texas from county, cities and school districts, nearly every one of them will have a portion set aside for debt repayment or interest and sinking. The city of Tyler has every dollar collected on its property tax levies going straight to our operations for the public. Every penny they have paid by our citizens is used towards maintenance and operation of city services. Tyler continues its steady and strong growth on property values with a three point nine seven percent increase in values for the past year. For the past six years, we continue to be in the range of four to five percent growth in values, which allows for predictability and sustainability as we build our budgets. This year, we experienced closer to our regular rate of growth in values and additions, which reflects the confidence that our citizens and newcomers have in Tyler as a location for residential, business and industrial growth. There is an interesting story that's reflected in this graph that I hope you'll notice. We experienced tension and stress with our budget as we developed this one and forecast for current, for future years. But it is not as stressed as the budgets we went through during the Great Recession. Growth in values went up so quick that when they burst, the decline was sharp and long for the next few years. Our steady growth around four percent allows for bumps and bruises without crashing the system and needing large property tax increases. We can take smaller steps and modify where needed and maintain the services expected by our citizens. Our Tyler Water Utilities represents four functions of providing quality water and protecting the environment and public. First is our water treatment process, which includes our water sources of Lake Tyler and Lake Palestine to our Golden Road and Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant. Next, we have seven hundred and forty-two miles of water distribution lines that connect to our residents and businesses. After it's used, we then have our wastewater collection systems and lines, including our lift stations and manholes to take our sanitary sewer to the final location, which are our two wastewater treatment plants, where it is treated and the resulting effluent is put back safely in our creeks. We continue this year with the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant Improvement Projects and the quality of water flowing from that plant into our pipes. The backwash pump station and Clearwell Bafflin projects have provided for greater filtration and chlorine residual stability to improve the taste and smell of our water as it makes its way to its, to the user and are completing, being completed in this next coming year. We are also recommending the addition of a chief treatment plant operator for the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant. We have a chief treatment plant operator that operates for both plants. And from a management and operational best practice, we each plant needs their own chief plant, treatment plant operator versus one that serves for both plants. Our Utilities Crews continue to work to replace older deteriorating water lines with new PVC water lines in different areas of the city, especially where residual counts have been an issue. With this concern, we maintain flushing programs of dead end mains throughout the city to prevent stagnation and the loss of chlorine residuals in our water lines. An example of how we work to loop dead end mains when possible, Utilities completed the Bascom Road Waterline Looping Project. This increased the average pressure by forty-five PSI for the neighborhoods in Chapel's Quarters and Chapel Woods areas. Through this type of improvement, we may improve the quality and pressure of the water being served to our customers. Tyler Water Utilities entered into an EPA consent decree in April two thousand seventeen. The decree has a ten, ten-year timeline and we are in year five of that agreement. It is estimated that all projects related to the consent decree will cost approximately two hundred and fifty million dollars. It is also estimated that an additional one hundred and eighty-three million dollars in debt will be issued and another twenty-one million dollars will be pay-as-you-go funding from the Water Utilities Capital Fund. One of our major wastewater treatment plants and for this year, one of our, pardon me, one of our major wastewater treatment plant, treatment projects for this year and into the next year involves extending the capacity and life of one of our plants that has been in operation since the nineteen fifties. The South Side Wastewater Treatment Plant is permitted by the Texas Commission on Environmental Equality to treat nine million gallons per day. Because two primary clarifiers were taken offline in two thousand and three, the capacity is approximately thirty percent less, making it able to treat six point seven five million gallons per day. The construction plant project for this plant that has already been approved by the council will restore the capacity to nine million gallons per day and provide for the continued growth in the southern and eastern parts of our city. With our agreement on the, with the Environmental Protection Agency, our EPA, on the consent decree in two thousand seventeen and commitment to improving our water quality to our customers, we have increased our rates on water and wastewater services for the past five years to pay for the cost involved in operations and capital improvements. We still compare very favorably to the rest of the water wastewater services prices in Texas. Using the Texas Municipal League Annual Utility Cost Survey, we see that our rates are lower on residential water fees and similar or lower on wastewater rates depending on usage as compared to other cities' utility rates. For the coming fiscal year, we are not proposing any increases on the base rates for water or wastewater service. Those rates will remain flat per usage for our customers. We do have a two dollar and twenty-one cent increase on the regulatory compliance fee, which is directly tied to the debt associated with the EPA consent decree work on the wastewater collection system. As a comparison for our solid waste rates for residential pickup of our thirty thousand two hundred and nine, nine hundred and twenty-nine customers, we offer a premium service at a considerable low monthly rate that provides on average eight collections per month. Our solid waste staff has consistently received high remarks during the citizen surveys, delivering top-rated services and demonstrating their call-to-serve commitment with outstanding customer service. In addition to the quality waste collection service provided by the solid waste department, a portion of the residential collection rate goes towards the operation of our code enforcement department and Keep Tyler Beautiful. As illustrated on the chart on the left, we steadily maintain growth in our residential customer base. As the number of customers increase, so do the resources needed to maintain the level of services that our residents know and love. From the drivers who maneuver vehicles the size of tanks with ever-shifting loads through city streets with the utmost safety, to code enforcement officers helping educate citizens on and resolve code violations, and the continued work with it throughout the city performed by Keep Tyler Beautiful that keeps parks, neighborhoods and streets clean, all these services work together to keep Tyler the natural beauty it is and part of the monthly solid waste fee paid by our customers. To put in perspective the impact that code enforcement and Keep Tyler Beautiful make on our community, the number of code enforcement cases has risen approximately forty-six percent from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty. In two thousand and eight, code enforcement worked an average of four hundred and seventy-five cases per month. Through May two thousand and twenty-one, they're averaging six hundred and fifty-three cases per month. So far in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, Keep Tyler Beautiful has organized twenty events that have helped by over nine hundred volunteers and have removed nineteen tons of litter from the community, planted a hundred and sixty-five new trees, completed three new murals to compact direct graffiti on public spaces and transformed seventy-two traffic control boxes into works of art. All the items mentioned above, as well as the costs charged by other similar sized cities and solid waste services, go into considering residential rate changes. The proposed rate of nineteen dollars and fifty-three cents will move the city ahead of where we have previously been in relation to our benchmark cities, but Tyler still will be one of the most economical choices in cities that provide twice a week residential solid waste collections. The City of Tyler's Development Services Department operates as its own enterprise fund without any public dollars used to provide planning, zoning, inspection or permit services. Based on our research of our benchmark cities, the City of Tyler is the only city that funds development service functions exclusively through permit and application fees. We evaluate the fees annually to keep this fund solvent and sustainable without public assistance, yet at the same time stay competitive with our benchmark cities. We've also been in a recent position of revising our residential permit fees. The state legislature adopted new laws in two thousand and nineteen to prohibit cities from charging residential fees based on valuation. Valuation is a method we use along many other cities in Texas to cover staffing costs as well as the cost of labor material, as the cost of labor materials increased, which in turn increase the valuation of the property. Due to the changes in state law, residential permit fees are now assessed on a price per square foot. We developed a rate structure for permit costs where we converted from valuation to cost per square foot equivalency. The proposed new rate of residential new construction permits is a flat rate of thirty-five cents per square foot of the new building. An important note as we see the comparison, the City of Tyler does not charge impact fees, which reduces the cost of the permit in comparison to other cities of similar size to us. As per the budget and tax rate adoption schedule for state statutes, the council has two actions that it must take today. It must adopt a proposed rate that becomes the ceiling for consideration and further debate and to use for publication purposes, and the council must set a public hearings for the budget and tax rate. Staff recommends holding the public hearings at your next regularly scheduled council meeting on September eighth and the second public hearing at your meeting on September twenty-second. We expect to bring the tax rate and budget here to council for adoption at your meeting on September twenty-second. I do want to extend my deep appreciation to my budget team, Kedrick Trimble, Rhenessa Wade and Blake Cathy for their countless hours of taking the budget proposals from each department and working to refine these into the document that we have for review today. In addition, I note the incredible work in showcasing our budget story as shown in this presentation developed by Julie Goodgame and Blake Cathy. I also provide my gratitude to you, the city council. You provide direction and priorities and conversations, deliberations and ideas throughout the year that set the stage for the budget we provided. Our focus on employees, infrastructure, parks and public safeties reflects your vision for this community. I thank you for your service and insight on behalf of the citizens of Tyler. It is a privilege to serve you and present this budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two programs and services for your consideration.
Thank you, Ed. Good job.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Any questions for Ed?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, I know you've mentioned this several times throughout the presentation, but just so we can take it out and, and mention it specifically, I'm always concerned when we're talking about raising property taxes, especially when I ran on a, a, a low tax rate and continuing a low tax rate for the city. But I'm also equally concerned with ensuring that we provide for our first responders, the police and the fire department. And so, one of the things that I picked up on and I want to specifically ask, so you could point out, is out of the general fund expenses of one point five and the general fund revenues of one point seven, it, it equates to roughly ninety percent of those funds going to the first responders. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir. If you kind of, as we look, with the tax rate that we are asking for council to consider and that you've had with new values as well, you'll generate about one point seven two million dollars off of that. And what we're asking for as far as for pay adjustments for new staffing with police and fire and equipment related to that, that is about enhancements of about one point five seven million dollars. So you can see you get that as far as the one point seven million in additional revenue and the one point five seven million that is being utilized towards the police and fire specifically in relationship to pay increases and then also enhancements for their services.
Okay. And then with us going to this new proposed rate, we will still be able to also utilize the pay-as-you-go method, which I believe you also mentioned. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we will also be able to continue with the no general obligation debt. Is that correct?
That is correct. The tax rate, again, it's just kind of a little tax rate, kind of primal. Tax rates typically, for most when you see for what the county will adopt, for what Tyler ISD will adopt, for White House ISD or any of the other school districts, all of those have actually two components to the tax rate. There is the maintenance and operation tax rate that they are adopting and there's the interest and sinking, which is related to debt that they have that comes off of being paid for through the property taxes that's associated with it. The county has it, like I said, in fact, they have a bond election coming up. They recently had one. Those then tie back to that interest and sinking rate. You actually have an interest and sinking rate as well, if you want to think about it. It is zero point zero. And so, as your tax rate is adopted, you really are adopting only, you know, your twenty-six point nine nine or whatever rate that y'all adopt, is that plus the zero point zero, zero for your, what would be the interest and sinking portion.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bob? Ed, you had mentioned at this proposed tax rate, twenty-six point nine nine, that there was a higher rate of voter approved rate that I believe is different than the one that was in our presentation, we had in our presentation, twenty-seven point six six cents. What, what was the rate that you had stated?
So, yes, sir. So, the rate we are recommending is twenty-six point nine nine.
Right.
But, bear with me just for a second. I want to get to the slides so I can get those, say those numbers accurately. Because as I was going through it, I recognized that it was a lot of numbers being thrown at y'all and trying to understand how all that worked together. So because of an interesting little fine print that's in the law that the state adopted was the increment system. And so you last year actually reduced your rate, tax rate, below what the no new revenue, new rate was. You had twenty-five point nine zero cents. And so you left, in essence, what the, the state considers an increment on the table that you then have the opportunity to go back and take a bite out of for the next three years. And so, that is part of the justification for why this rate is actually higher than what your three point five percent off of what your no new revenue rate would have been generated for this year. But, so when you add that together, and this is what Councilman Westbrook, I think, is asking towards, is the full then utilization of that increment plus to, in addition to kind of as far as to the rate that you have the opportunity to, takes you to twenty-seven point...
Six, six, three, nine.
There we go. Thanks. Yes, twenty-six, it's at twenty-seven point six, six, three, nine.
Oh, sorry. It has the same. Okay. I thought I heard a different number. Forgive me.
No, no. So, let me get there, pull this back up. Okay, so, yes. So your voter approval rate, actually for consideration, is twenty-seven point six, six, three, nine. And that is with that increment that we're talking about. So that increment then gets added to and to the effective rate or to the, essentially to the voter approval rate that you go up to and then that, so that one point additional cents what it was that was there allows for you to go up to that full, essentially, let's see. Here's, the increment was one point one nine five cents, so that's what you have to kind of, to, to utilize to go above what the three point five percent, if you so choose. And so, did, did I make sense on that?
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, I have a couple more questions, if you don't mind.
Okay.
You had two engineering positions posted, a city engineer and a develop plan, a development plan review engineer. Are they included in this budget?
So the city engineer and the development plan reviewer, as well as the other development plan review engineer position are both, are all included in the budget? Yes, sir.
We've had assistance for those two engineering positions in the past. Is there a plan to add those during this fiscal year?
For the development planning position, there are, there are two positions there with that. For the city engineer, there is just the city engineer, but then there are also, as far as multiple positions in, that work with engineering. And so, there is no official title of assistant city engineer, but there are other engineers that are in the engineering department.
Okay, all right. And then, knowing that our team, our employees are our greatest resource and we can't compete heads up against the private sector, but to stay close and competitive with benefits and salary are really important for us to keep a tenured and knowledgeable staff in all the departments that, that we have. Are the phase two shock or pay adjustments included in the two six, twenty-six point nine nine proposed tax rate? Because I only showed them in the twenty-seven point six, six, three, nine.
So for the, the shock adjustments, which are kind of factored throughout the different funds, we have been able to, the departments, so, so the amounts budgeted for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two within all the departments for shock adjustments is one million sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. And so, the ones, there are several departments that aren't at the full shock. But for some departments, like solid waste, we are asking that to be at 100% with next fiscal year, just because for kind of market competitiveness for those type, for those positions.
And that's considered in the current climate of where wages, hours, wages and salaries are at currently and where they're trending, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then one last question. You talked briefly about parks. In the budget, we've got 642,000 and change budgeted for park maintenance for fiscal year 21-22. Do we depreciate the park equipment, or do we have an accrual program to replace worn-out or broken equipment?
We don't have a depreciation schedule for parks' equipment in the vein that you're asking about. And that is something that ultimately we probably want to try to get to, of having that to where you have that level of replacement. A lot of the replacement now is when we go in and do the overhaul of parks, you know, similar to kind of the mention of Pollard Park and Winters Park in the presentation. And those are two where equipment has gotten to where it needs to be overhauled and new additions need to be done. And so, typically then kind of overhaul the new park as well as then equipment that will go with it.
Glad to hear that that's a goal, because if you own a business, that's key to your business for longevity and so on. And I made reference to the 642,000. I'd had a conversation with Russ Jackson before he left the city. Sad to see him go. But he said that with the current park improvements and the parks that we brought back online, that ballpark could take a million dollars. So that's still a gap from what we budgeted to what his proposed would, budget would be to maintain parks.
Yes. Now, one of the interesting things, though, is in kind of for Russ that we're proud of is, we kind of work together on the solid waste side for the, what we generate off of landfill. And so, there is a kind of a capital fund for parks that is being generated that I think is going to be meaningful in the future. Where those numbers are, I'll tell you. And for much of this, we kind of look to see then where, especially as we do our planning for different parks, where can we then allocate this funding that we're able to kind of pull off of. And so, it's on Parks Improvement Fund 206. And so, with the Park Improvement Fund for the coming year, for example, will generate 642,910 dollars from the landfill access fees that we're charging out there to kind of utilize for park overhauls, so that we're able to take it, we're able to kind of wean it off of use of half-cent funds and even for kind of additional, even general fund revenue, that there is kind of a building funding, a funding stream that then is able to utilize for park improvements.
Okay. And then there were four items that were at the bottom of the tax rate, proposed tax rate, when we had the budgets to consider. And these were listed as needs, not wants. The asset recovery software module, which businesses and education, all aspects, know that IT is top of mind and most important. New carpet for the third floor of the library with the newfound excitement that's been created by staff in library and library services. I think that would be a valuable thing for us to do also, too. The downtown campus improvements. Would you talk about that just a second? Explain what a downtown campus improvement?
Yes, sir. And for the, for the libraries, carpet is actually factored into the budget.
It is.
And as, as the software that you made mention of a minute ago as well, sir. And so, for the downtown improvements, one of the things that we've funded, budgeted towards is, as downtown has continued, especially from the private sector point of view, we have multiple improvements throughout, at different parts for buildings and for the sites and grounds. We look at our own campus and realize we need to redo the parking lot across the street where City U is located. And also landscaping, even prior to winter storm Europe, which really caused, as far as havoc on our landscaping, we needed to work on landscaping for, for Development Services Building, for City Hall, and painting of some of the exteriors of the buildings that we have here in order to kind of really, so we can put our best foot forward, as well as the private sector has been doing the same here locally.
I think that's important. There are some things that the city needs to take the lead role in, appearance of our facilities, one for sure. And then, did you say that the second phase of the shock adjustments were in the budget?
The second phase is, for some of them, it'll be the complete, like I mentioned, for solid waste. There are some departments, Communications, for example, which is in year two of that. And so, there are just, there are really, as far as the number of departments is, kind of getting smaller and smaller, they still have to go through years, or actually years two, three, and four. We do look to see where we can move those up as we can, but, you know, it's, we're kind of getting to the more of the smaller departments that are still right now the ones that are having to still go through the shock adjustments.
Shirley, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you.
Good.
Councilman Westbrook, you grabbed a couple of my questions, so thank you for that. And Councilman Haney, I want to piggyback on comments you made. You know, as Tyler grows, we're seeing our population grow. With that, our first responders are the people that we've got to grow to take care of that population. And Chief Cobble getting that A-plus ISO rating is huge benefit for all the citizens. Glad to see that this budget, we can get the two new firefighters. But along with our vertical growth, you have a very expensive vehicle, but that's growth and progress that we're seeing in the city of Tyler. And then, as you mentioned, for police, you know, the homeless officer is going to be a great benefit to work with our nonprofits who do a tremendous job in that area. And then, the digital side of crime, I mean, that's, those guys in the facility that Chief Teller has over there is great when I've toured it. So, someone that can be dedicated to that is going to probably just speed up the processes within police departments. I commend you for that. And these guys need to be paid. They have a thankless job, and I'm glad that you were able to get the pay increase for them in this budget.
I want to get just a couple of comments. And I want to piggyback on what these guys have said regarding public safety and the need for that, but I want to kind of drill down on one of them, and that's the homeless police officer, because I see him back there, Johnny Green.
Yeah, we may need not to call him the homeless police officer. He has a house.
But seriously.
He has a family. I mean, I just didn't hear.
Well, seriously.
Homeless resource. Please help him.
Johnny works so well with, with the homeless, and he knows them by name, and he knows where they, where they are and communicates with them, and just has a connectivity with them that, that works. And recently, he was able to find homes for some of them, whether it's Salvation Army or Highway 80, or home with some of their families. So, I've seen it work, and so I'm so glad that we are putting a resource towards, towards the homeless, and I appreciate Johnny for that. The employee, the, the shock raise, the shock and the raises for the employees, you know, we're in such an environment where, like you said, Councilman Westbrook, where we are competing with, with the private sector and we're competing with the public sector and other communities. And as I've said in the past, when someone that lives out in Mineola, when they're driving towards Tyler, they can take a left and go to work in another city, or they can take a right and go to work in Tyler. And what we want to make sure is that our, our pay is such that they want to take a right and make that little bit more money here in Tyler than they would somewhere else. So, I'm glad about that. And then, and the last thing I'll say is, and this is something that you've mentioned in the past, but I've actually read the story recently, and, and that's the, the story of the tortoise and the hare. And we are slow and steady, and we don't go, just jump out there. But you remember who won the race? The tortoise won the race. So, I, I think it's a good story, and it, it fits what we do. We've got three different action items on here that I'd like to read if everybody is good with that. The first one is, is there a motion to accept the presentation of the fiscal year 2021-22 proposed budget?
So moved.
Motion by Haney, second by McGee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second action item, I will accept a motion to schedule public hearings on the proposed property tax rate of 26.99 cents per $100 of assessed value in the proposed budget on the September 8th and September 22nd, 2021 council agendas.
So moved.
Motion by Haney, second by Nguyen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last action item is, is there a motion to place proposals to adopt an ad valorem tax rate of 26.99 cents per $100 of assessed value in the fiscal year 2020-22 budget as action items on the September 22nd, 2021 city council meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Haney, second by McGee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. I'd like to make a comment on that, Nay.
I'm sorry, I forgot to open up for discussion.
I'd like to make a comment on that. Thank you to Mr. City Manager and staff for the excellent presentation and digging down into each of those budgets and, and making the recommendation of the 26.99 cents. I think that we've heard still that the needs of the city are greater than what the 26.99 cents is, and that's why I support a higher rate. And it's the needs, it's not the wants. And so, Ms. Mayor, all respect, I just wanted you to know what my vote was about.
Okay. So we did have a motion, and we did have a second, and we did vote, and the vote was one, two, three, five to one. So, motion passes. Thank you for the presentation. We have two more items on the agenda. M1.
Cameron.
Mayor. Counsel. Cameron Williams, traffic engineer. Here with you today, M1, is a resolution that will authorize the city manager as city representative to enter into an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for right-of-way participation for four projects that are coming in the city. And so, those four projects are FM 756, which is Biloxi Drive from Jeff Davis down to FM 346, FM 2493, which is Old Jacksonville from St. Luke 323 to FM 2813, and FM 2496, Rome Square Road from State Highway 110 to FM 346, and State Highway 31, which is from Loop 323 to County Road 236. And so, this is a participation that is required by the Texas Transportation Commission for the city to do. It is right-of-way acquisition that's based upon the schematics that have been prepared, and it's only for properties that are within the city limits associated with these projects. And then, it is a fixed price, so what is paid, that is, does not change. It doesn't increase or decrease. If for some reason the acquisition was less, we wouldn't get a refund, but that is not anticipated for this. And the prices are based on today's value. So if that property goes up in two years, whenever they actually purchase the project, or property, that doesn't change our fixed price that we pay for this right-of-way acquisition. And typically, the participation is at 10% of the right-of-way cost. But currently, in this year, fiscal year, the Smith County is underneath an economically disadvantaged county, and so that provides a reduction of 95% of that 10%. So it's really a half a percent of the right-of-way acquisition. And this is kind of, this could change after September 1st, and so that's why we want to go ahead and enter into the agreement for these four projects, even though they're several years out before they actually take place or some of this occurs. And the next slide gives you a breakdown of these four projects. You see the total right-of-way cost would be around 19.5 million, and so typically, the city's participation would be 10%. So that's close to 1.9 million dollars that we would do. But with that current status that we have, that brings our participation right now at 97,677. And this will be, proposed to be funded through the half-cent sales tax fund, and we'll be going to them in September for that approval of those funds. So with that, I will, it is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement to contribute funds to the state for proper development and construction of the state highway system and make payment for said funds for 97,677.
Any questions for Cameron?
Move to approve M1.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McKellar. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Cameron. Kate?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
The City Manager is ready for some of them. Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Kate Beetz, Tyler Water Utilities Director. I'm here today to request that you authorize the city manager to enter into a service agreement between the City of Tyler and Liberty Utilities or Tall Timbers Sewer Corporation. So, the Tyler Oak Creek Development and Liberty Utilities, back in March of 2021, entered in to an agreement, and Liberty agreed to release three tracts of land, approximately 64 acres, owned by Tyler Oak Creek Development, from Liberty Sewer Certificate of Convenience and Necessity. And those three tracts are shown on the north and south in green in the aerial of the current Oak Creek Development, which is also served by water and sewer by the City of Tyler. So, Tyler Oak Creek has now asked us, asked the City of Tyler, to provide retail sewer service from Tyler. So before we can provide sewer service to TOCD, Tyler and Liberty need to reach an agreement designating service areas, and then that agreement has to be approved by the Public Utility Commission of Texas. So this service agreement sets out Liberty's consent to Tyler to provide service to Tyler Oak Creek, Liberty's consent to transfer of the sewer CCN, and no compensation is going to be owed by the City of Tyler for the transfer of the CCN. So, I'm here and I'm asking, requesting that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to enter into the service area agreement between the City of Tyler's, Tyler, and Liberty Utilities or Tall Timbers Sewer Corporation. Regarding retail sewer utility to three tracts of approximately 64 acres in Smith County, located east of County Road 178 between County Road 192 and Quad Drive.
Any questions for Kate?
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Nguyen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Just a few items. So, the information, just the general data for the 2020 census came out last week, and the Census Bureau, in that 2020 census information, showed that for Tyler, our 2020 count came in at 105,995 residents. This is 9.3%, 3.9% growth over the 2010 census count of 96,900 residents. We do believe that the count was lower than the actual number of residents in Tyler, but understand the census count was difficult last year due to multiple factors. If you go online, there are more details that you can kind of start to get into for, especially for some different demographic information and also comparison information for previous years. We are working with Nancy Rangel, who was part of the Census Committee from last year, on having her come forward to the council at a coming meeting, probably in either late September, for kind of a presentation on the, the full census and what they see. We're also still waiting on, as far as some of the more, what we call block data information, which will probably be released either, well, we expect to be released in September. The pin goes towards redistrict effort, but as y'all are thinking about that. For the Tyler Water Utilities, Kate, just...
So, I'm here and I'm asking, requesting that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to enter into the service area agreement between the City of Tyler's Tyler and Liberty Utilities or Tall Timbers Sewer Corporation regarding retail sewer utility to three tracts of approximately 64 acres in Smith County located east of County Road 178 between County Road 192 and Club Drive.
Any questions for Kate?
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Nguyen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just a few items. So, the information, just the general data for the 2020 census came out last week, and the Census Bureau, in that 2020 census information, showed that for Tyler, our 2020 count came in at 105,995 residents. This is 9.3%, 3.9% growth over the 2010 census count of 96,900 residents. We do believe that the count was lower than the actual number of residents in Tyler, but understand the census count was difficult last year due to multiple factors. If you go online, there are more details that you can kind of start to get into, for, especially for some different demographic information, and also comparison information for previous years. We are working with Nancy Rangel, who was part of the Census Committee from last year, on having her come forward to the council at a coming meeting, probably in either late September, for kind of a presentation on the full census and what they see. We're also still waiting on, as far as some of the more, what we call block data information, which will probably be released either, well, we expect to be released in September. The pin goes towards redistrict effort, but as y'all are thinking about that. For the Tyler Water Utilities, Kate just kind of gave up here and gave a presentation. They're proposing to schedule the free chlorine conversion from Monday, October 4th, and have it end on Sunday, October 31st. This is something we've started doing every year for the past, I guess, probably about four or five years now. And so, we look to try to have a start after the East Texas State Fair. And so, there isn't a way to avoid the Rose Festival, but it really shouldn't affect any of the activities they're doing of a free chlorine conversion. Also, on pipeline analysis, is currently out doing smoke testing through Tyler at our, a couple of our different sewer meteor basins. And so, we've kind of had information, we've pushed out there that they're doing this until Friday, so that people, if they see smoke coming up from the ground, they know to contact and what's going on. And so, that's it for me, Mayor. Hopefully, we can get them done before we can get these guys set, get up, set up.
Well, I want this guy to get his camera set up, so he can watch us adjourn.
Okay.
Where'd he go? Is he around the corner? All right. Yeah, where'd he go? Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.